I guess we have enough seats, I was worried. I think we got a few extras. One, two, three.
There are additional agendas, if anybody would like an agenda, raise your hand.
Are there any pastors here today?
We will be called to order, this is the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting, it is Thursday, April seventeenth at approximately ten AM. If you would stand for a moment, a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd face the flag and repeat. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So. We're gonna go a little bit out of order, we're gonna go to item four, which is proclamations. We have a busy day for proclamations, we have a total of eight of them, we even have an add-on. So, we'll start with cerebral palsy awareness day and Commissioner Vasquez is just gonna read that one.
Okay, we have cerebral palsy awareness day honoring this Chloe Rendy. Whereas cerebral palsy CP is the most common physical disability in children, affecting movement, muscle tone, posture, and caused by damage to the developing brain and individual living. Cerebral palsy displays remarkable perseverance, strength, determination, overcoming daily challenges, refining the ability of ability and achievement. And whereas, March twenty-fifth is nationally recognized as the cerebral palsy awareness day, a time to increase awareness, promote inclusion, and celebrate the accomplishments of individuals with CP, and Fayette County is committed to fostering a community that supports individuals of all disabilities and recognizes extraordinary contributions and inspiring journeys of its residents. And whereas, one such individual, this Chloe Rendy, has exemplified resilient strength and have dominant, a dominant spirit. Born September two thousand fourteen, Chloe faced significant medical challenges from birth, including a stroke that necessitated the removal of part of her skull at just sixteen hours old and relieved her brains well. Despite a grave prognosis from medical professionals, Chloe has consistently defied expectations, walking when she was told she never would, and surpassing intellectual benchmarks in setting, achieving ambitious personal goals. And whereas, Chloe's journey is a testament to the power of perseverance, the impact of community support, and the importance of recognizing the potential for every individual. And Fayette County acknowledges and honors the unwavering dedication Chloe's parents, Ginger and Chuck Rendy, who have championed her success and celebrates Chloe's achievements as an inspiration to many. And now therefore be it resolved that the Fayette, County of Fayette, Pennsylvania, does hereby proclaim, March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, as cerebral palsy awareness day, and Fayette County urging all citizens to wear green solidarity, communicate themselves with CP, and celebrate the resilience and contributions of individuals living, individuals living with this condition. Be it further resolved that the County of Fayette, Pennsylvania recognizes and honors this Chloe Rendy for her incredible strength, determination, and achievements, serving as an inspiration to all of us. In witness thereof, do have her to set the order on the twenty-fifth day of March twenty-twenty-five, signed by the Fayette County Commissioner.
Chloe has been involved by many people in the community and Lancy Dance, students in the studio, more modeling, they've all accepted her shortcomings and accepted her perfect will and perfect self and those culture itself.
They're an inspiration to all. Thank you, Reverend.
So we have an add-on proclamation that we're gonna do right now. It's a few requests that we had, and I wanna call Brandon Newman. Brandon is, I'm gonna call him April, which is eight-one-one, eight-one-one, call before you dig, safe digging month. We're on that Brandon, call everybody while it's important to call before you dig.
Of course. So, good morning, my name is Brandon Newman, Senior Damage Prevention Liaison of Pennsylvania, one call, it's southwestern PA. And yes, it goes safe digging month, so as a reminder to everyone, as we're getting ready for spring weather and we're doing our outdoor projects, contact eight-one-one. Everyone's a home owner, it's a free call for you to make sure you're doing your excavation, your digging work as safely as possible. By dialing eight-one-one, there's underground lines marked out, and you can do that work safely, not injuring yourself or taking out any critical infrastructure underground. Blow anything up, including yourself, so you don't wanna do that, yes. So as a reminder again, eight-one-one every time before you dig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's not a whole business. You're not gonna be able, just don't read it. I want to send you the rule and.
Do you wanna give mine?
Thank you.
The other picture actually wasn't here, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is for denim day, which is April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Denim day is a day that is an annual observance, thank you for coming up on our show, first, about sexual assault and supporting survivors. It serves as a call to action for all community members to challenge misconceptions and defenses associated with sexual assault. I don't know if they do proclaim the origin of denim day, which is.
You want me to do it?
Rather than we're done here, so we're gonna resolve that we encourage all county employees today, so if you're a county employee, on April thirtieth, you are permitted to wear denim on this day of work to show the solidarity with victims of sexual assault and intimate partner violence. We are committed to continuing our efforts to raise awareness, educate our community, and support the prevention of sexual assault, let us work collectively to create a safer and more supportive environment for all. So, thank you very much, and your name?
Mary Lynn, hi Duke.
Okay, and if you would like to, I know the, I know the, or we're doing, sorry, but Dennis.
In the nineteen nineties, there was a young girl, eighteen years old, in Italy, who was getting her driver's license, and she was out with a, an instructor, and he raped her. He was convicted at the lower court levels and sent to prison, but he appealed that conviction, and the justices in what would suffice as the Supreme Court in Italy had determined that because she had on tight jeans, she, it was implied that she had to help him get the jeans off in order for him to have sex with her, and therefore it was consensual. When that happened, the justices, or the parliament in Italy, I'm sorry, were outraged, especially the female members of parliament, and they created denim day, which traveled all over the world. And so, on April thirtieth of April of this year, they are celebrating denim day, and I encourage everyone to wear denim in solidarity that if no one ever gives permission to rape or have sexual violence happen to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna recognize our student poll workers, who bring up very good music.
Yes, we have four, four students.
Poll workers, students?
And counselor, if you'd like to come up as well.
The Fayette County Student Poll Worker Appreciation Page, and I will tell you that all workers of polls and the students in particular, learning at a very young age to go into work in poll election days, are very important to the county and to our free election system. So, these guys are very important to us, and we would appreciate that. I have to get that started, then I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, the Pennsylvania Student Poll Worker Program promotes civic participation and citizenship in our counties and local communities. Whereas, the Student Poll Worker Program in Fayette County provides an opportunity for our high school students to learn about the voting process through service in the local election precincts on election day. Whereas, Fayette County wishes to recognize the efforts of our students who have stepped forward to serve in our polling places through the program. And now therefore be it resolved that the Fayette County Board of Commissioners hereby declares today, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Student Poll Worker Appreciation Page. And it's signed by the three commissioners, Commissioner Scott, and Commissioner Vincisius, and myself, and you. Thank you very much for your work.
We have certificates presented. We, I think, is there any other student poll worker here? And here's Mr. Lloyd, come up, we have one of our counselors. So I'm gonna just read them off. The first one is Lily and McCracken. And you're from Brownsville.
Correct.
Brownsville area school district. I believe the rest of ours are from Laurel Highlands, but we had participants in Uniontown, Conneville, and the program's expanding, so we're really excited about it. These ones should be from Laurel Highlands. Ethan, is Ethan here? Just Marcus, okay. We had thirteen altogether, as I said, so we'll make sure everybody gets a certificate. It's a busy time of the year. So Marcus Murray, thank you for your service. And if anybody is interested, any school districts, any students you meet, seventeen, you have to be a US citizen and a resident of Fayette County and get permission from your principal and a written permission from a principal and a parent, and you too can serve as a student poll worker. And we would be delighted to have you.
Good evening, good evening.
I'm very proud of all of the students for coming out and to be a part of their communities. It means a lot to not just see that, what people are doing, what I'm doing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, May, May twenty-twenty-five, it is gonna be the mental health awareness month. I know we have people from the Mental Health Association, Fayette County Mental Health, come on up. So again, it's gonna be declared proclaim, mental health month, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas, mental health and overall physical health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Mental health, mental illness is an important, is as important to treat as any other illness or disease. Whereas, people with mental illnesses recover if given the necessary services and support in their community. Whereas, people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and our communities. Whereas, people, the number of people in our community affected by mental illness continues to grow and has no socioeconomic boundaries. Whereas, stigma and fear of discrimination mean many who would benefit from mental health services will seek help. Whereas, research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with mental illness. And whereas, good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, businesses. Whereas, the County of Fayette has collaborated to reduce stigma around mental illness, provide education, provide rich treatment resources for mental health. Therefore, on this day, Fayette County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of twenty-twenty-five as mental health month of Fayette County. As Commissioner of Fayette County, we also call upon all Fayette County citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools, to recommend our community to increase awareness of the danger of mental illness, reduce stigma, discrimination, promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people. Signed this date by the three commissioners themselves and themselves. That be that. And you wanna introduce yourself and say a word?
Sure.
My name is Angela Baker from Fayette County Behavioral Health, and this is Maria Jackson of Ludwig.
I'd like to thank you all for giving me this recognition, as one of the fellows who helped teammates and fellow um, uh, here.
Thank you.
And just wanted to say, May twenty-second, in the Yawk River Park, we will be having a summer kickoff in Will to see that, and everyone is invited to come, encourage everyone to come. And we also have a monthly calendar in May, take a look at the calendars, I'll leave us.
And that day was certified by anybody's memory, motorcycle safety month.
Yeah, truly, yeah. I only have four now. Yeah, I only have four motorcycles now, so.
Slacker.
Yeah, really. I'm working. Motorcycle safety awareness month. Whereas, safety is paramount for motorcycle riders who are traveling, traverse our Fayette County roadways. Whereas, drivers of all vehicles must be aware of their surroundings and become educated on how to share the road with all motorists, especially motorcyclists. Whereas, motorcycles are a common and economic means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption and road wear and contribute in significant ways to traffic and parking congestion relief. The Fayette County chapter of the Alliance of Bikers aim toward education, regularly promotes motorcycle safety, education, and awareness through various programs. Whereas, the Fayette County Motorcycle State engaged extensively in local activism and voluntarism and makes countless other meaningful contributions to our communities through fundraising, fundraisers, sponsor writings, and other initiatives. And whereas, the Fayette County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim, May twenty-fifth, or twenty-twenty-five Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Fayette County, Pennsylvania. We encourage citizens to honor the key role motorcycles play in the communities in which they live and thrive through continued drivers' education and roadway awareness, signed by on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, by the Fayette County Commissioners, Scott and Vincisius, and myself, and you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, please.
Really, just a lot of people don't really know what ABA is, and yes, it is the Alliance of Bikers aimed towards education, so we do do a lot of activism for the laws that, you know, police the roads as far as motorcycles go, but really what we are in this, this town, in our chapter, is we are a community service group that fundraises and does a lot of things. We've done Mount McCretina gift, gift drive for the Mount McCretina Senior Living Home. We've done that every year now for years. We do multiple rides per year, including fundraisers for the Chubby Hands Organization, which provide funeral costs and expenses, they completely cover funerals for adolescents and their parents. And then every year, we also do a ride that benefits the county. Last year, we did Back to Blue, which all went to the police department. This year, May tenth, we invite everybody out, we're gonna be doing the same type of deal, but this will be a first responder run, so all the proceeds will benefit Fayette, EMS, Uniontown PD, and then Fair Chance Fire Department, that's where we're gonna have the after-party. So even if you don't ride motorcycles, if you do, we're meeting May tenth, right outside the courthouse, that's where all the registration's gonna be, between ten-thirty and twelve-thirty, and then we're gonna have a nice little ride through Fayette County, ending at Fair Chance Fire Hall, where everybody is welcome. Even if you don't ride a motorcycle, you can pay a small donation, and there's a meal provided, there's a van provided, it's gonna be just a big kind of party acknowledgement of our first responders, and all proceeds are going to be divided between the three organizations after the run. We already have tons of community sponsors, we're always, you know, welcome for more sponsorship, more involvement, whether you ride or not, we're an organization that wants to do good, so come out, check it out. We meet the first Friday of every month at the American Legion on Route forty, and everybody's welcome to, you know, join the meeting, stop in, see if we're gonna help out. We also do a bunch of goofy fun stuff, we did a sock hop this year for the community, which again had nothing to do with motorcycles, we just had an order of dates and had a good time, had a ton of things, so, you know, check it out, follow the page on Facebook, we post all the events coming up and everything going on, and we appreciate everybody in the county just watching out for motorcycles and not making it a little spot in the road.
Thank you. May ten was that more awesome for the blessing of the biker?
It will.
From the courthouse, we're very pleased to get out of the second. Thanks for doing. We have two more, they're both economic development related, and. This is for small business week.
Okay. Fayette County Commissioners proclaim, May fourth through the tenth, as Small Business Week in Fayette County, Pennsylvania. Recognizing the vital role small businesses play in strengthening the local economy and community. Proclamation honors dedication, resilience, and contributions of local entrepreneurs, emphasizes the role, important role of the Fayette Chamber of Commerce in supporting, collecting, and advocating for small business across the county. All residents are encouraged to show their appreciation by shopping, dining, and supporting local, not just this week, but year-round. Because when small businesses thrive, we all thrive.
Ashley Morgan from the chamber.
Everybody, let's go shop small now. We work with shop small entrepreneurs every day, and it's humbling to see how many are coming into the county. We love to see the growth and the expansion, but it doesn't happen without you, so think Fayette first when you're shopping. We can, I joke, we can do it now, but do it now. May fourth through the tenth is an important week to remind us to do that, but we should be shopping small, we should be using small business for any household repairs that you need, there's, there's so many ventures, hairdressing, dog grooming, all of the things we can use here in Fayette County. So, come with us, support us, and thanks for doing.
Thank you. Are you saying up here from them?
Up here.
Um, you're listening? Sorry. So our last proclamation is for economic development week, we have Earl from the chamber, and Margaret is the economic development coordinator for Fayette County. Fayette County Board of Commissioners proclaims, May eleventh through seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, as an economic development week in recognition of a vital role in economic development place, with a strong resilience. This week celebrates the dedicated efforts of local organizations, including Fayette County Economic Development Council, the redevelopment authority, the Fayette Chamber of Commerce, and the Fayette County Economic Development Department, as well as municipal governments, nonprofits, workforce agencies, and educational institutions. Together, these partners promote growth, investment, and innovation across the county. Commissioners extend our gratitude and encourage all residents to recognize the importance of community impact on economic development. Thank you very much. Earl, you wanna say a word?
Hi, Ashley Morgan.
So, on that, during that week, on Wednesday, at seven thirty AM, there will be a breakfast provided to people who have properties that are looking to sell them. We are bringing in a speaker who is going to talk about data centers, which is very big in the economy right now, and it's very important for data centers to be located in the United States because it's a national safety issue. We want our data to stay here and not go overseas, so that's why we're looking to bring more data, to bring data centers.
Thank you all for indulging us with the proclamations.
It is time for public comment on agenda items. We will give you a Thursday three-minute time limit. You may not yield your time, you may not give your time to somebody else to finish your thoughts. And, uh, so there's a three-minute time limit, it's pretty basic. When you come up, tell us your name, and give us the item on the agenda that you plan to talk about. So... So at this point, we will open it up for public comment on agenda items.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna speak on the sheepskin items today. I'm Eric Snyder, I'm the Director of Outdoor Recreation for the National Road Heritage Corridor and the Fayette Trails Coalition. I'm here today to express strong support for trail-related agenda items before you, particularly those considering the Sheepskin Trail. The approval to bid for bridge components in Uniontown, the grant proposals for land acquisition and trail design, and the change order ratification in Spring Hill Township are not just construction decisions, they are strategic investments in Fayette County's future. The Sheepskin Trail connects more than just places, it links communities, promotes healthier lifestyles, creates economic opportunities for small business, builds pride in towns it passes through. These projects use dedicated funding sources and not general fund dollars, and they move us closer to a connected, accessible trail network that serves residents and attracts visitors. I encourage your continued leadership in supporting the Sheepskin Trail moving forward. These projects represent not only physical infrastructure, but momentum, vision, and public trust. Trails are a necessity and a pillar of community progress and prosperity. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time.
Thank you. We'll go to that first, uh, it's, I can't see that far, so I don't know who's... Okay, state your name. Erica, you wanna unmute here?
Hi, my name is Erica Seaverangel, I'm a resident of Uniontown, and I did owe the support of the Sheepskin Trail items for all of the, um, my speaker before me, uh, those reasons that were given. Um, and I don't know if this is a perfect time for a question, but just a question on the, um, the little more detail on the partnership with the federal prison. That agenda item on Tuesday kind of sparked my curiosity, and just wondering, I was looking through, just skimming through the documents and seeing a partnership with the federal marshals and with ICE, and then, um, was just wondering a little more detail on that. I don't know if that's appropriate to ask, or not, but that's my question.
So, on, on the agenda is a contract with the United States Department of Justice that will allow federal inmates to be housed in our Fayette County Jail. And, uh, up to, up to thirty inmates, there's also a provision on there for us to, uh, transport these, the inmates, and, and, you know, they pay the cost for the transports and things like that. And, and so we have, uh, a certain number of beds, and there's, not all those beds are filled, uh, so that will allow us to make a little bit of revenue, uh, and help out our travel partners at the same time. Does that answer your question?
I guess my concern was about, um, the provision, I saw a little checkmark, again, with the, the ICE and federal marshals, and just with the national tenure right now, I was a little bit concerned about what kind of partnerships we're getting into, um, given, you know, people disappearing and, um, you know, the national politics that it all, so, just wanting a little, you know, um, more clarification on kind of what we're getting ourselves into with, you know, all of the other now.
So this has nothing to do with ICE detainers? I know that's something in the, the, uh, the news, um, you know, if, if there, that has nothing to, we are just simply housing inmates who, uh, for whatever reason, uh, there's an overage at a state, at a federal facility, and they ask us to house them. This has nothing to do with anything about detaining, uh, for ICE, but...
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
It's an opportunity for us to make, you know, a pretty substantial amount of revenue, uh, for the county. And we have the space available, so we see this is an opportunity to help supplement our revenue stream.
All right, uh, next for public comment?
Hi, can I try the normal?
Okay, state, state your name.
Hi, my name is Kelly Draw, I'm living in the city of Uniontown, and I was just, um, asking for your support on all the Sheepskin items, thank you.
Hey, next?
I'd also like to ask for your support for the Appreciate it program, and any item related to the trail plan, or, or, thank you.
Anybody else online? All right. Whoever wants to speak, come up to the, uh...
Uh, my name is Ed Stanish, I have some questions on the new proposed, uh, solar panel, uh, deal. It's, it states in here now that all solar facilities shall be set back five hundred feet from the perimeter of property lines. Now, uh, does that include all new ones, or all existing ones, or, uh, any one that's already applied for?
That would only apply for anything moving forward, after the resolution.
Anything moving forward?
Yes, after the resolution.
And, uh, is the, is the county aware of a new, uh, power grid coming through the county?
Yes.
A high-power cow, cow, okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks.
And just for the record, the, the, that's potentially, that's, they haven't decided on a, uh, path, so that may, may skirt into West Virginia and not even come through Fayette. All right, uh, next?
Good morning, my name is Jason Yable, I'm with Prospect fourteen, um, I'm a solar developer working with, uh, many Fayette County landowners, um, we have projects originated with. I'm requesting that the Commissioners not approve the current version of the solar ordinance that includes the five-hundred-foot setbacks. This, uh, this version does not serve a purpose of protection, um, it unnecessarily restricts small rural properties from starting the solar development process. Since any solar project must work through a special exemption, the zoning hearing board will ultimately have the ability to review each project and make pertinent decisions regarding the property line setbacks. In essence, the zoning hearing board can use a scalpel to restrict projects where necessary, instead of, uh, this ordinance basically using a large bludgeoning tool. The, uh, the five-hundred-foot setbacks create a significant starting point hurdle for solar development in the county. It requires us to seek a variance to get anything off the ground, and there are some significant legal hurdles with seeking variances. As mentioned by the Economic Development Proclamation, um, pulling data centers into the county will require enormous amounts of energy, and solar is an and, not an or. So, um, in essence, what we would like to see is an ordinance that allows for solar development in this county to move forward instead of restricting it. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Christian Zavinsky with Energix Renewables, um, we're also a solar developer. Ask, uh, really second Jason's comments, um, and would ask that the Commissioners reconsider and, and send back the, uh, the proposed amendment for the zoning ordinance. I'll touch on the battery storage a little bit more, um, you know, right now, the ordinance has language just not allowing battery storage, which is just a blanket no. But again, like he said, Jason had mentioned, uh, the Economic Development Council brought up warehouses, and I, I'm not an expert on data warehouses, but I would find it very hard to believe that any data warehouse center would locate without the ability to have battery storage. There's industry standards that any developer is gonna be happy to follow, um, no one's trying to just slap something up in a couple of months, I mean, there's, there's so much that goes into it, safety regulations, the DEP's involved, um, state and federal, um, regulations, so, I would just ask that you reconsider, um, and we're happy to continue to work with the planning commissioner, who'd be it, to come up with a set of standards for battery storage. You know, there's also a lot of tax revenue being left on the table, um, I believe by the five-hundred-foot setbacks and just the flat-out ban on S. So, um, I know we've been over this a lot, and it would be a lot to go back and ask everybody to continue to work on it, but I, I do think, from a financial revenue perspective, it, it would be prudent, potentially, for, for the Commissioners to reconsider and, and look at the potential tax revenue that could come from this. And we're happy to do it, you know, hand in hand, we're not trying to force projects in that shouldn't be there, you know, there's definitely been some, some projects that shouldn't have been put forward by some, some different developers, but, um, I think everybody's kind of learned from the past, so, uh, appreciate your consideration, and I'm looking forward to, to hopefully coming up with a, a solution to, to best development in the county. Thanks.
Any other public comment? State your name.
My name is Dr. Garrett Breakiron. First of all, considering solar, you know, we, we all have been talking about taxes lately, and the one thing that you have to realize, if solar does go in, then those taxes are reverted, let, let's say it's farmland, and, and it's not taxed very much. Those, those lands go back three years, and those solar companies pay the increase in taxes for the past three years, plus, that's gonna increase the tax base from then on through, the remainder of the term that, uh, solar is put in. So that would definitely increase our county taxes, school district, not increase, but increase the revenue for the county, increase the revenue for the township, and also increase the revenue for the individual school districts. One, one thing that, it, it's funny, I, we, we are, when I say we, my son is trying to get solar on his farm, and, uh, a lady approached me and was telling me about that she was against solar going across from her property, and I simply asked her, I said, "Well, let me ask you something, since you're so against solar, if that was your property, would you want to put the solar on?" And she goes, "Oh, yeah, probably." So in other words, it's okay for the individual landowner, but not for the people that don't own it. So, again, I propose that, you know, if you own the land with certain restrictions, you should be able to do what you want with your own land. On, on a different note, infrastructure, we, we need to get infrastructure. I know Fayette Pen's trying to get infrastructure, uh, down to their seven-hundred-acre plot down in Spring Hill. Uh, I know Senator Pat Stefano is working very hard to, to get this working together, and, uh, it would greatly increase our tax base, again, for all three township, school districts, and county. And if, uh, we can get these type of infrastructures down to that, there are multiple companies that want to come in, and one is a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-million-dollar investment with a five-year later plan of two-point-one-billion-dollar investment. So you want to talk about increasing revenue for, for those three, you know, townships, school district, county, that, that is very big. So again, those are just things that need to be considered. To reiterate what the other two previous gentlemen said, some of the restrictions on there are pretty much gonna annihilate everybody that's trying to get solar. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jerry O'Brien, good morning, Commissioners, good morning, everybody. I'm here to thank you guys for supporting the Sheepskin Trail. I don't know if every citizen knows or not, our little portion, Sheepskin Trail, is a part of a major trailway, runs from Parkersburg to Pittsburgh. The Great Allegheny Passage is a main part of it, the parts in West Virginia are almost complete. We are a key portion to this. I know a lot of people don't want it, but we have nothing for our youth, we have nothing for our seniors to get outside. This is an ideal thing, I don't know if any of you walked the portion that's done going into Hopwood, but if you go out there, you will see the number of people that come in from Mason Town, Smithville, all over. They come here to walk that little path, it's only like two miles or better. This is something that's gonna help the community. When these big businesses want to come, and we want them to come, they look at everything in the community that is gonna take care of their youth, because that's what these companies want, they want the youth, and if it isn't here for them to come to here, Fayette County's gonna lose out. These are vital parts of our infrastructure, and I want to just thank you for your support.
Hello, my name is Felix Rizak, and I live in Nicholson Township, Fayette County, and what I'd like to address is the solar farm issue also. And, uh, the main concern I have is the amount of solar farms that there are permitted in Fayette County that's already been permitted. And even though with the five-hundred-foot setback that the Commissioners are proposing right now, that's a good thing, but for the people who live, I got several pieces of property in Nicholson Township, and, uh, they got solar farms scheduled to go right up against my property. Well, how many of you people would like to have a, a junkyard put right next to your house, okay? So, if they would, uh, consider having these setbacks for the people who already applied for these zoning permits and stuff for a solar farm, that would be helpful too, to preserve the tourism in Nicholson Township and Fayette County realm. People come from all over the place just to look at farmland and, uh, woods and stuff, and nobody wants to see a bunch of solar panels there in that house, in, uh, fields and stuff. Also, solar farms will devalu, devalue my property. I have rights too, and I have a solar farm put right next to my property and devalue my, uh, house. I think that's just being one-sided, even though, uh, I know you wouldn't want to have, uh, somebody put a solar farm right next to your house, okay? And not only that, how about the health risk? Has anybody ever considered a health risk of a solar, a large solar farm? Well, they really don't know, but they say here generally, uh, sixteen-hundred feet for a large-scale solar farm, to live away from it, and a small solar farm, six-hundred-and-fifty-six feet. That's just some of the stuff that then, uh, that they have checked on. So nobody really knows, but after you put a solar farm in and you're living right next to it, and you find out that it's, uh, not healthy for you, it's a little bit too late then. So if they would have to get the, if the zoning people would, uh, consider retroactively, uh, some of these permits that's already been out, handed out, to make setbacks, that would probably help out a lot, to keep, uh, private property not, uh, being subjected to this solar farm issue. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the law doesn't allow to make it retroactive.
Pardon?
The law does not permit the ordinance to have a retroactive effect. The rules that were in effect at the time the application was filed govern that application.
Well, what, what I have is a property owner, if they put a solar farm, what, now, what's it, about fifty foot from my house?
I think the, the zoning hearing board has been imposing various setbacks... I think the zoning hearing board has been imposing various setbacks depending on what they feel is appropriate, but it's been more than that. I, I've seen some decisions they've rendered that have been a lot more than that.
Uh-huh.
I don't know if they've issued a decision on any projects near your house, but they will, they have been issuing decisions creating setbacks already that are several hundred feet.
Well, if they have a setback with a big, high fence or something, a barrier, that would help out, too.
I think they've been putting eight-foot-high fence, I believe, is what they've been imposing. But those cases are all still in litigation. Appeals have been taken, so there's a long way to go. And the other thing to remember about these solar applications is less than half, maybe even less than a third, will get built. That's what the, the experts have been saying. So many of them will get approved and will never get built.
Well, I own two houses right beside where they're planning on putting 50,000 solar panels in, and that's going to devalue my property considerably, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Michael, if you'd like to unmute.
Hey, you're good, Kate Depp. My name is Michael Cook. I am a solar developer based in Washington, D.C. Appreciate your time. I wasn't able to hear in person. I think a lot of the comments and debate is very important to have smart regulation of solar facilities. Nobody wants an eyesore next to their home or in their community. This is really best accomplished not through 500-foot setbacks, but really through uppers, what we call "new shift screening." And we see a lot of counties, a lot of communities, I see a lot of different ordinances, and I see a lot of good projects, good projects that actually protect the value of neighbors, really around the uppers and the screening of that. And it can be a very successful way to preserve, you know, for 30 years and not polluting, completely silent, in many cases while letting it stay a part of the community. So again, 500-foot setbacks, unfortunately, are well-intended, but really aren't about uppers. You want to have vegetative uppers, which is other party ordinance, you've got a very good job. The other elements of this, except for two features, one is the 500-foot setbacks that actually cause the developers to use more land for the same power generation, and it really dilutes the tax benefit to the community. Really just use more land for the same project, forces more land to be developed, and the county can see relatively less tax benefit for the smaller parts. So something more modest, even 100, or it could be very large by national standards, frankly. The other is energy storage. I think, mistakenly, we equate lithium-ion batteries with energy storage. And storage is very important, really. It really helps utilities, and I think this, the energy storage in general, of any type of technology, is unfortunate. It really ties our hands with utilities. Storage is very important, can help keep, like, the rates lower. And you're talking about data centers, at the same time you're talking about no energy storage. For example, our company, we do BES facilities, and we never use both the lithium batteries because of privacy. There are other battery systems available, with little to no privacy at all. So I just encourage you to not have an outlier in there of battery energy storage. It really kind of ties the hands of utilities. And storage, it provides a very important feature that can actually help for energy-based electrical issues in the long-term, for the community, and if you have blackouts, et cetera, you can have electrical stored in that region. Again, it does not equate lithium-ion batteries, certainly we don't use them. So just in summary, I think you've done a very good job trying to listen to the community and give a balance in your ordinance. The two features that I think are outliers, unfortunately have adverse impact, are the 500-foot uppers, too extreme, that's kind of a solar showing, and I don't think it has the benefit of protecting and shedding the project that people think, and that they have a BES storage up at large. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Warren Hughes from Mason Town Matters. We, as a group, support the grant proposal that you're submitting for the German Mason Town Park. It's important for our community. We have a walking community, and by what I mean a walking community, we have many people that don't drive. They walk to the grocery store, to the church, and so forth, so this will give them an opportunity for some recreation, walking also. So we support your proposal. Thank you.
My name's Steve Stanish. The solar panels that you're going to put out are going to be proposed for, is that German Township? That's German Township, close to, to South Union. Is there going to be battery storage there? Is it going to go straight to the grid, like, off of a 25,000-volt line or 138,000-volt line?
So I don't have that information at this moment. I mean, we can, we can find out.
That'd be an important thing to find out for you, whatever get passed, you know, one way or the other. I know he was talking about battery storage in there, and that would be important, if it was just going to be hooked up straight to the grid or if it's going to be put on storage first.
Yeah, I don't have any, any information on specific projects that this may... Anybody else for public comment on agenda items? Ayanun, thank you very much. Appreciate the, your comments. Next, we will have the Controller with the Financial Condition of the County, Controller Rob Rose.
Good morning, everyone. This is the Controller's Report for April of 2025. In our general fund, we have a cash balance on our general ledger of $5,581.201.34, with a tran-tax anticipation note of $6 million. 2025 revenue, our budget is $56,987,995.14. Year-to-date, $12,000, $12,416,863.26. We've received 21.79%. Expenditures in our budget, $55,095,085.53. Year-to-date, our expenditures have been $17,035,929.24, so we have used 30.92%. Money's due to the general fund, total $8,422.817.8. Marcella Shell Fund, 13. Unconditional Wells account, we have $107,133.6. In our legacy account, there's $39,512.34. Cash balance in the Bridge Department account equals $22,632.73. And in our Capital Reserve Fund, Fund 51, our cash balance is $56,978.88. Thank you and Happy Easter, everybody.
Any questions you have, you can direct them to the Office of the Controller. Thank you. All right, now to the meat and potatoes, number six, Fayette County Redevelopment Authority.
Consider approval of a cooperation agreement between the county, the redevelopment authority, and the Scouting America Laurel Highlands Council related to the administration of funding received through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP.
Motion. Is there a second?
No, a second.
Okay. Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of an amended cooperation agreement between the county and the redevelopment authority related to the administration of funding received through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number seven, Adult Probation Office.
Consider approval of an amendment to a contract between Fayette County Adult Probation Office and BI Incorporated to include the cost of the electronic monitoring to be changed to the offender as follows. For the standard service, a total of $3.45 daily, paid for by the offender. For the enhanced monitoring, a total of $3.95 daily, paid for by the offender. This enhanced service would include offenders contacting a monitoring center to request schedule changes, which would allow officers to focus more on their other daily job duties. The contract extends through December 7th, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0. Number eight, Behavioral Health Administration.
Consider approval of the following contracts and modifications. Under Health Choices, Professional Service Agreement 2025, East End United Community Center, Fayette County Community Action Agency, Inc., Fayette EMS Special Services Company, and under Modification Agreement Number 1, 2024-2025, Authentic Perspective Psychological and Consulting Services, LLC, as listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0. Number nine, Buildings and Grounds.
Consider approval to advertise for bids to strip and wax the floors in the courthouse.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number 10, Children and Youth.
Consider ratification of a fiscal year 2023-24 purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and the Bear Foundation of Pennsylvania, 2550 Kingston Road, Suite 302, York, PA, for foster family placement services on an as-needed basis.
Motion.
The rates are listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 purchase-of-service agreement addendum between the county of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Lifespan Family Services of PA, 203 Lane Avenue, Punxsutawney, PA, for ICPC services to include home study, adoptive home study, and support of licensed ICPC home. The rates are listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Cuyuga Home for Children, Inc., doing business as Cuyuga Centers, 101 Hamilton Avenue, Auburn, New York, for trauma therapy services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 purchase-of-service agreement addendum between the county of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Corporate Security and Investigations, CSI, 3645 Broadhead Road, Manaca, PA, for family finding and engagement services. The rates are listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2024-25 purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and the Bear Foundation of Pennsylvania, 2550 Kingston Road, Suite 202, York, PA, for foster family placement services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase of HIPAA Business Associate Agreement Addendum supplements and is made part of the agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Avanco International, Inc., 12685 Wiltonshire Drive, Clifton, Virginia, for child accounting and profile system application service provider agreement relating to privacy and security services. There is no change to the cost of this service.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 addendum for purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Avanco International, Inc., 12685 Wiltonshire Drive, Clifton, Virginia, for a business agreement for consulting and ad hoc IT services and support. The rates are listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Avanco International, Inc., 12685 Wiltonshire Drive, Clifton, Virginia, for CWIS 2.0 upgrades. The upgrades include reports, research findings, project design specifications, anticipated training requirements, infrastructure status, and estimated target dates, schedules, and critical checkpoints and deliverables. The total cost is $350,000 and is shared by all CAPS counties, and the cost has been proportionally allocated across the counties based on the number of users. The cost for the upgrades for Fayette County is a fixed price of $6,351.15.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Avanco International, Inc., 12685 Wiltonshire Drive, Clifton, Virginia, for child accounting and profile system application service agreement relating to support services. The cost for this service is $11,152.19 per quarter.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval of a fiscal year 2025-26 purchase-of-service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Avanco International, Inc., 12685 Wiltonshire Drive, Clifton, Virginia, 20124, for AFGAR's upgrade and maintenance. The rates are listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval to purchase one privacy film roll, frosted white, at a cost of $233, 24 economy folding chairs, black, at a cost of $25 each, four plastic stackable chairs, $70 each, one classic cafe table at a cost of $260, five economy folding tables at a cost of $105 each, four pneumatic adjustable height desks at a cost of $355 each, and one downtown reception desk at a cost of $825, for a total of $4,133. This purchase is through Uline and will be 100% funded through the Fayette County Plans of Safe Care Grants.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0. Number 11, Human Resources.
Under Central Department, consider ratification of the hiring of Alma Lucas, part-time clerk, non-union, $12 an hour, effective March 24th, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Kathy West, part-time clerk, non-union, $12 an hour, effective March 24th, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries 3-0.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Rita Walinsky, part-time clerk, non-union, $12 an hour, effective April 7th, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Motion's brought, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider ratification... Consider ratification of the hiring of Carla Seback, part-time clerk, non-union, twelve dollars an hour, effective April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Under CYS, consider approval of the separation of employment of Tyrisa Betters, case aid one, effective March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider approval of the retirement of Valerie Brewer, caseworker two, effective March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider ratification of the voluntary demotion of Lorena Watson to caseworker two, SEIU CYS, twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents an hour, fifty-two thousand, two hundred one dollars and fifty cents annually, effective April one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Dalton Jurich, caseworker one, SEIU CYS, twenty-four dollars and four cents an hour, forty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars annually, effective April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
I want you on first.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under EMA, consider approval of the separation of employment of Marcus Fenton, dispatcher trainee, effective March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of the promotion of William Loudon to part-time dispatcher one, SEIU pay grade ten, step SR, twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents an hour, effective March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of the promotion of Andrew Kelly to planner-trainer officer, SEIU EMA, pay grade seventeen, step A, twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents an hour, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars annually, effective April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under FACT, consider approval of the resignation of Catherine Fletcher, Transportation Information Specialist, effective April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider ratification of the separation of employment of Tammy Weaver, FACT driver, effective April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider approval of the promotion of Ken Lowry to full-time, non-CDL driver, pay grade twelve, step A, SEIU, nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents an hour, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and fifty cents annually, effective April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under Fayette County Behavioral Health Administration, consider ratification of the hiring of Ashley Wellington, MH Program Specialist, one, non-union, pay grade thirty-nine, step MN, twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents an hour, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars annually, effective April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twelve, Office of Human and Community Services, FACT.
Consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six Fayette County Office of Human and Community Services Assurance of Compliance to be used with their two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six Human Services Development Fund and Homeless Assistance Program Provider Contracts.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider approval of Kelly Bradigan, FACT Operations Manager, to be designated as an alternate FACT employee in the absence of Director Rudy Dutko, as authorized to access the Federal Transit Administration's electronic award management system to execute the annual certifications and assurances issued by the FTA to execute all FTA awards on behalf of Director Dutko, thus binding the applicant recipient's compliance with FTA's requirements.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider approval of the bid-buck policy for the Fayette County Office of Human and Community Services, Fayette Area Coordinated Transportation as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number thirteen, Office of Tax Services.
Consider approval of the attached resolution granting the authority of the Tax Services Director, Rebecca Suzinski, to authorize, make, acknowledge, and sign deeds of any real estate belonging to the county which they are authorized to sell by resolution of the Board.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under tax claim, consider approval of the following repository bids opened on April first, two thousand and twenty-five, subject to all conditions being met, with the total bid amount of two thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and twelve cents as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number fourteen, Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Consider ZA twenty-four dash zero one, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance for the Inclusion of Utility Scale Solar Facilities. This ordinance would provide regulation for utility scale solar facilities and serves to amend the Fayette County zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment addresses definitions, solar facility application and procedures, general design and installation standards, decommissioning, coordination of local emergency services, among other requirements.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? So, I know there's been a lot of talk about five-hundred-foot setback or not, a five-hundred-foot setback or smaller. We've had two public hearings in which the sentiment was either they want new solar in Fayette County, which we are not permitted to not have a place for solar farms in Fayette County. This is not something that's allowable by law. So, given that that is not allowable, you know, we heard from our constituents. Our constituents said they don't want to buy their house, they don't want it in their beach. And as far as I'm concerned, we've listened to our constituents, and so this solar ordinance will include a five-hundred-foot setback, which is, can get around that if you have a, with a variance. I know there were certain situations where the, you know, the railroad was the adjacent landowner, and they're not going to care. Well, then, you still have the ability to apply for variance. And so, I will be supporting this solar.
It's really hard to deal with these kind of subjects because they are so fast, and there's definitely complete opposite sides on the opinion. And it is a hard thing to have to come to. We are put in charge of that to some degree by you all as voters, and sometimes we're going to make decisions that people like, in other words, we don't, that they don't like. And this is one of those, I believe, that's in there. I know that the five-hundred-foot setback does take a lot of ground, but along with that, a lot of our farmers still, you know, for people that don't want solar, there are a lot of farmers out there that do want it and feel that it's a big need for their survival. And so, I look at that, I look at the agriculture side of it, and really, I mean, I've had my negative feelings about solar. A lot of it has to do with the land and the dirt underneath, but, you know, we've also been told by the solar people that that's an area that is covered by them. And it's just one of those decisions we have to make, but I don't want to limit it and say absolutely not because of the need for energy throughout our whole country, and but also, you know, for the land rights owners at the same time. And I know that it's a tough decision to make, and I feel that I will also be supporting this ordinance, and the same as my public.
All right. Without hearing anything else to say, we'll take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to bid out the purchase of two bridges for the Sheepskin Trail in Union Town section of the trail from US Bridge. Bridge number one, South Bridge, sixty-four foot length and eleven foot deck width in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred. Bridge number two, Middle Bridge, eighty foot length and twelve foot deck width in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars. The Sheepskin Fund was established, Fund forty-four, and stated funds were dedicated to the Sheepskin Trail project, and this specific procurement is coming from that source. This is not general fund money.
Motion.
Before you move on that, we'd had some discussion on this at the agenda meeting, and I did get some clarification from Joe Ambrose. And I think this needs to be set for the record. It's really, it is a, we're not purchasing it from US Bridge, we are using their specs, but it can be their specs or equal. So, other bidders are permitted to bid, so that's one clarification. And the other thing is that the amounts that are listed there are our estimates. Those amounts could be different, upper, lower, or greater, depending on the bids that come in.
So, should I put estimated?
Estimated, yes. Estimated amount, and again, utilizing the US Bridge specs, but it also could be or equal to comply with our requirement that is open to other bidders that may want to bid.
I made a motion.
Second. Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote on the motion, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries two one.
Consider approval of a project modification request grant proposal with grant ID four four two two zero to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Fayette County Public Defender's Office, which is a supplemental grant in the amount of one hundred, one thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars, and extends their current Intigent Defense Grant Program until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. There is no match requirement.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a grant proposal to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for acquisition services and land purchase of the Sheepskin Trail from South Union Township to Fair Chance Borough, Fayette County. Total project cost is two hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. The grant amount requested is two hundred, one thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars, and the match amount is thirty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. LSA grant will be utilized to meet the match obligation.
Motion.
Second. Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion?
This section, it, it's, we own most of the land, so that's a good thing. We have a couple properties we have to resolve, but we own most of that rail line going up to the Fair Chance Line.
Any further comments? Hearing none, take a vote on the motion, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Motion carries two one.
Consider approval of a grant proposal to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for design of a trail around Fayette County's German Mason Town Park. The grant request is one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and eighteen cents with a required match of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and three cents. The total project cost for this development project is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and twenty-one cents. The reason for initiating this project is that it's a result of the master site plan completed for German Mason Town Park, and the people from this area of the county rank building a trail as a high priority.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I'm sorry.
Are you opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Motion carries two one.
Consider ratification of change order number one for construction of the detached one-mile section of the Sheepskin Trail Southern Extension in Spring Hill Township, Fayette County. The amount is thirty-three thousand, nine forty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. DCNR has approved this change order, which was funded by a previous change order.
Motion.
I second the motion. Motion is brought in, move in second. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
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 I'm sorry, no. Sorry about that, no.
Motion carries two to one. Number fifteen, Public Defender.
Consider adoption of the two thousand and twenty-five federal poverty guidelines at one hundred percent as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Number sixteen, Commissioners.
Consider approval of the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five Commissioners Meeting Minutes.
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program as attached.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to approve the purchase of natural gas delivery services from Inspire Energy, three fifty West Twenty-second Street, Suite one zero one Norfolk, Virginia, at a rate of five dollars and ten cents per DTH for the period of June one, two thousand and twenty-five, to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight, as attached, per solicitor approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is brought in, move in second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.[1682.87]
Consider approval of the purchase of electric power services from WGL Energy Services for thirty-six Seventh Avenue, Suite two two five Pittsburgh, PA, at a rate of nine point zero four one cents per kilowatt hour effective with the May twenty twenty-five meter reading date for thirty-six months, ending in May twenty twenty-eight, as attached, per solicitor approval.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries the last two. We're working with an energy consultant called Crislin Energy, and given what's potentially going to happen in the future with energy rates, they've researched this and got us the best deal for the next three years. So hopefully those last two end up saving us a considerable amount of money.
Consider approval of entering into an agreement with Crislin Energy to provide look-back services for potential overpayments of PA state sales tax effective immediately with final contract approval of the solicitor of Fayette County. There is no fee for this service.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? So as anybody knows, Fayette County is not required to pay state sales tax. We do know that some of our utility bills have included state sales tax. Crislin Energy is going to look at our energy bills and apply for reimbursement from the state for any time that we have overpaid state sales tax.
That can be a considerable amount of money. So it was a good thing to hire them. Didn't cost us anything, and we really have a chance to save money in the future and go back and save some money from what they're going to do with this line item.
So. Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider ratification of entering into a professional service agreement with Paul Pato effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at a rate of twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents per hour as attached.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval of a utility pole easement on county-owned property parcel fifteen dash fourteen dash zero zero nine two dash zero four for Chestnut Valley Biogas LLC of Cannonsburg, PA, and First Energy Pennsylvania Electric Company, as proposed and attached, and authorized to Chief Clerk and/or Commissioners to execute the same.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? We were approached, we were approached by Chestnut Valley Biogas. They're working on a project out in Messmore at the landfill to retrieve the gas underneath the ground, and they needed to have relocate a couple of poles that were on our property. So that's what this is regarding. The property, or the, the motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. I should make sure that we keep this on, on record, Jack, so that when First Energy gives us a hard time somewhere down the road, like they did a few years ago with the broadband.
Consider ratification of the following transfers that occurred in the twenty-twenty-five budget from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to April ninth, twenty twenty-five, with debits and credits of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars as listed.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of entering into a contract with the U.S. Department of Justice to house federal prisoners at the Fayette County Jail at a rate of ninety-six dollars per day, subject to approval of the Fayette County Prison Board as attached.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Kind of discussed this earlier. Hearing no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Consider approval to enter into a lease agreement with AMJ Real Estate Holdings of eleven sixty-five National Pike Union Town, PA, for a location at eleven seventy-six National Pike Hopwood, PA, for Magisterial District Judge Office fourteen dash two dash zero one, effective October first, twenty twenty-five as attached.
Motion. Second.
Motion's probably moving second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Public announcements.
I have one. The, this was to the Commissioners Saturday, May tenth, twenty twenty-five, marks the thirty-third anniversary of one of America's great, great days of giving, the National Association of Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. So each year, on the second Saturday of May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food donations from their customers. These donations go directly to local food pantries to provide food to people who are in need of help. It would, they would appreciate if we can announce this, and that's what we're doing at this meeting, because we won't have a meeting till the middle of May, and it'll be past that date. So participating in this year's letter-carrying stamp-out food drive is simply just to leave non-perishable food donation in a bag by your mailbox on Saturday, May tenth, and your letter carrier will do the rest. Please help us in the fight against, to end hunger and as we celebrate the thirty-third anniversary year in America's great day of giving. And that was signed by local letter carriers. That's the N-A-L-C branch, five twenty in Union Town.
I do have a, a announcement. You know, we, we have obviously had a lot of negativity surrounding the Sheepskin Trail in particular. I do want to, we, we work with the Golar Highlands, which is the, the local marketing agency for tourism, and they track all kind of things, and we just had a meeting with them this week. Local tourism in Fayette County accounted for six hundred eighty-four million dollars in spending, which is fifteen percent of all spending in Fayette County. Nineteen percent of all spending in restaurants comes from tourists out of state. Sixteen percent of all retail from tourists from out of state. Twenty-one percent of all spending at attractions comes from tourists from out of state. And that, our tourism, local tourism in Fayette County supports fifty-six hundred jobs. And I just want to go on record and say this is why I support the completion of the Sheepskin Trail and building other new tourism assets in Fayette County to increase these numbers. At the same time, when we do that, we build quality of life, we build healthy lifestyles, and we build alternative transportation. So I just want to go on record and to let you know that all the positives that we, that I see with regard to the trail and tourism. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm going to actually talk about that a little bit. As everyone knows in this room, sitting here and listening online, and I've been very vocal about it, I'm not against trails.
Well, you are when you vote against trails.
I am against the cost of the trails. And even this, within the last week, I found there's a new regulation that's going to be put on the completion of a trail. It's going to cost another thirty to fifty thousand dollars, depending on the size of the trail. So it's not that I'm against a trail. I'm against the cost of the trail. And when you start talking, and I know the last mile that was put in is estimated around four hundred and fifty thousand, but still four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one mile of trail. What are we doing? I mean, there are trails that are put in for a lot, lot less than that, including, as the one gentleman said earlier, West Virginia. West Virginia trails are less expensive than they are here in Pennsylvania. That's my issue. That's my issue. And I wish people would understand that, that it's not that I'm against trails. My wife and I go on the trail in Conoverville. So it's not that I'm against a trail, I'm against the cost. And the cost has escalated to the point of ridiculous. That's what it's ridic, that's what it's actually escalated to. So that's the reason I vote no for trails, isn't because I dislike them, it's because of the cost. And when we have other things that are taking place in our country, in Doge, whether you agree with them or not, they've exposed a lot of waste that has been put out there by government. And this is another one of those areas in particular that when you get into the state levels and you see the regulations and the rules that are put on these, you would see what I'm talking about. And that's where my problem's at. That's what I say is a problem. It's not that I'm against trails. And yes, those numbers that, on tourism, yes, those are high. They're not all trail. It's Ohio Powell, it's Fallin Water, it's the campgrounds, it's a whole bunch of different things that are involved with that tourism increase. That's why we get that amount of money, not just because of a trail.
See, we, we can't, I mean, the state government, certain departments, probably the DCNR, the DEP, they set those specifications. We don't have anything to do with those. We just have to live by the regulations that they set. And we're in a situation where if we don't follow their rules, we can't get the grant money. And I know it costs more, and I'm not happy about it either, but what's the alternative? If we don't seek these grants and if we don't continue to build this trail, then our efforts to connect two trail systems and have increased tourism in the county are, are gone. And so we, we're, we're, you know, pushing forward to try to be as aggressive as we can to get these grants for each section. And, you know, we're, we're, we want that money to come to Fayette County instead of elsewhere. And, you know, we, I think we're doing pretty well. I mean, we're, we're multitasking and we're, you know, we're, we're looking ahead. We're, you know, every phase of this, we're juggling a lot of things and trying to get this accomplished. So we're just doing our best. And, and I've always, you know, worked hard to get grants my entire tenure, not only trail grants, but any kind of grant that we can get to help the county. That's less money that we have to spend locally if we can get these grants in here, because those grants are going somewhere. We have several on, you know, our, our agenda other than trails today. And we've always been aggressive with that, and I'm, I'm going to continue to be, because I don't want to, I want the county to have, have the best quality of life we can possibly have.
All right. So we're going to open up for public comment. You have three minutes, and.
My name is Henry Schiffbauer. I'm a resident of Merritt Manor in Bullskin Township, and I'm here to represent sixty-five residents of Merritt Manor. Our concern is the establishment of an Airbnb that's right across the street from me, and it's identified as splitting the distance, and it's at two seventeen Realiser Ivan Merritt Manor. And the details of the actual property are listed in the document I provided you. Presently, the classification for the house is single-family, medium-density residential. An Airbnb is a business. Anyhow, our concerns for having the Airbnb in the neighborhood are at least bringing in unknown, unvetted outsiders into our neighborhood, also disrupting the essential family-based character of our neighborhood, also increased traffic, safety of the families walking in the neighborhood, from, traffic from outsiders, and increasing noise and partying, which is a potential, parking issues if you have more than so many people in the house, the safety of the neighborhood children. The question is, who enforces disorderly contact and disturbances of the peace or the quietness of our neighborhood from outsiders? Who enforces the maximum number of vehicles allowed at the property? Since the property has limited parking and it has a maximum of three cars stated in our covenant, it shouldn't be allowed. Maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood is also a concern, and also the potential for reduction of property value. Also note that, that previous to this meeting, I contacted every political entity in Fayette County, including Commissioners, including the Planning and Zoning Committee. Also, I talked or I called Senator Stefano as well as Ryan Warner, no response. And also, we checked with the person in charge for collecting hotel tax, which is supposed to be paid by any Airbnb or VRBO or short-term rentals. None of that is being collected, it's not even identified. They didn't even have an approval for any particular thing to get an Airbnb in our residential neighborhood. I note also that Stewart Township, Ohio Powell, as well as Manaland Township have been addressing this issue of Airbnbs. It's not spelled out anywhere in the present zoning regulations for Fayette County. I attended the Bullskin Township Supervisors' Meeting. They also have no regulations for Airbnbs. I reviewed all the regulations for zoning regulations for Fayette County, which are online. There is nothing in there that specifies anything specific to short-term rental properties. Some of our questions are, why were the residents not notified about an Airbnb being approved to be in our neighborhood? Who approved it? What constitutes, what constitutes a residential-only neighborhood? And what is the definition of that? Also, what forms were submitted in, to whom and why is it permitted? How is it permitted? Where is it registered? Do they have an occupancy permit? No, they don't. Do they have a license? No, they don't. Do they have a license that's renewed annually? No, they don't. Do they pay taxes for a business? No, they don't. Do they pay hotel tax, occupancy tax to the state or to the local government? No, they don't. So, do they have a hotel occupancy license? No, they don't. How is it zoned? It's zoned residential, single-family. Who inspected it? Who sets the specific conditions for Airbnbs in Fayette County? No one. There's no doubt that the Airbnbs are in fact a business. It is a business. They shouldn't be in residential communities. And as such, they're illegal to be in a residential community. Merritt Manor has restrictions and protective covenants recorded in the Recorder's Office of Fayette County in Plan Book Ten, page one seventy-six. That document states that other lot owners within the protected area cannot use their property in a way that will destroy property values, lower the character of the neighborhood, or create a nuisance.
We can, we'll, we'll finish, Brad, and your, your time is up, but.
Well, what we propose, just as, real quick, is that we have the Commissioners create an amendment to the present ordinance, which defines adult regulations which are specific to Airbnbs, VRBOs, and short-term rentals, because right now, it's not identified anywhere. And that's all I have to say.
So we're going to let Sister Purcell address the issue. I can say, so we, we just did a zoning amendment today for the solar. That took eleven months. The other issue is the, the, well, injection well ordinance prior to that that we did, that took nine months. There are a lot of requirements. It's not as easy as just to say, just change the zoning. We have to have public hearings, we have to have the input of the planning commission. There's a lot more to it than just, than just, you know, it, it sounds easy, but it's not.
I understand. But relative to that, what about the ones that are in place presently or not being addressed by any ordinance?
Okay. So just to go back, let me, let me finish my, my, my thought there. In addition, anybody, as just, we just discussed with the solar, anybody who has already applied, anybody who's already in, you know, now, now, they, they may be grandfathered in, even if we did a county-wide zoning. I'm not, I'm not a legal scholar, so, but, you know, so the, you know, so changing the county-wide zoning might not solve your problem, is, is what I'm trying to get, get to you. Now, you do have deed restrictions in, in your deeds. I think you were going to start to say that, that you're not allowed to. Now, that is something that we don't control, we don't enforce.
Correct.
Okay.
Deed restrictions are enforced by the courts.
Right. The other thing that you mentioned to me on the front of, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that the Merritt Manor itself has rules.
Has a covenant.
Yeah, it has, so that, that in itself can actually restrict some of these things too, if they proceed with that. But like I said, I'm not a legal person either, that's why we have a gentleman sitting at the end of the table.
We do not have a specific short-term rental provision in our zoning ordinance. It is something we probably should look at, because this is a quasi, you know, if you rent your house to someone long-term, you don't need zoning. But these are short-term rentals which create unique problems and something that we need to look at. However, the, the deed restrictions, the plan, covenants, those are in place now. However, we don't enforce those. Those are enforced by judges, and they have, an action has to be filed in the court of common pleas. It, it can be, violation of those covenants were permitted by the ordinance, or sometimes the ordinance prohibits and the covenants allow, but it's two separate systems. But I think there, the office was looking at, the zoning office, the county zoning office, was looking at possibly making some proposals to deal with the short-term rental issue.
And I was reading some of the documentation from our planning director concerning this. Another thing that is possible is an approach to this, even though we do the zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, we do the zoning for Bullskin Township, but they could still pass a local ordinance to regulate some of these things which are speaking.
I discussed that with the supervisors, and there's no present situation where they can do that.
No, I think they're allowed to do that.
But they can now regulate anything that would constitute a nuisance.
I know that they do presently in Manaland as well as Stewart.
Noise and parking and things like that.
They can do that, even though we do their zoning.
They can't duplicate our zoning, or they can't go in conflict with our zoning, but they can do the other health, safety matters such as noise, such as.
Parking.
Parking. Parking, such as excessive light, you know, those type of things could potentially be regulated by the township. I live in the mountain, and we have tons of, of these, and in fact, in a way, it hollows out your community, you don't have people anymore.
That's right.
Uh, but of course, we get back to that age-old question, where does my property rights, the right to use my property for what I wanna do, conflicts with my neighbor's right to have a peaceful enjoyment of their property? And it's, they're tough issues, because...
And we're broad in the county, you know, it's, I understand what you're saying about your neighborhood, I live in a similar-type neighborhood in South Union, and, you know, that would be upsetting to the neighbors, but there are other neighborhoods that it does fit well, so it's hard to, on a broader scale, to hone in on that.
Well, one of our issues is to take it to the next step, it sounds like a legal thing, in which case, to do that as an individual in a residential community is very expensive. That's why the county is supposed to be enforcing such things, so you don't have to pass that on to the individual. I mean, that can be very costly, but just to hire an attorney is how many hundreds of dollars an hour? I mean, it's, uh, it needs to be addressed in actual law.
Oh, yeah. We can be expensive, and we can be time-consuming, and, uh, and usually, the other side has a, an attorney that's making it even more expensive, because they're fighting back. I can't give you any solace there, the system is, is difficult, but you control that, you know, you, the property owners, the homeowners association, control that, and you don't have to rely upon, uh, a governmental entity. We can do the zoning, it's an interesting question what you said about whether, Scott said whether it would apply, I mean, I think arguably, we would not have the, the same issue with the solar, because this is...
Because they haven't applied for it.
They haven't applied, and there's no approvals, and, and I think you could argue, we could argue that that is not, in light of the, uh, Supreme Court, our Supreme Court decision by the very aptly named case Spice of Life decision, uh, you know, when you have an Airbnb called the Spice of Life, you know that's a recipe for problems, right? Instead of, you know, peaceful and quiet, there's Spice of Life, um, so, I think there's some things, and I think the, you know...
Yeah, so, and, and we have been working behind the scenes with Sarah from Planning and Zoning and our Solicitors to kinda formulate a, a response, uh, you know, we have been talking about your issues.
That's why I mentioned about putting something in writing to us to get the dialogue started on that.
There you go.
That's what you did. Well, they did something else.
If you want electronic copy, I can send it to you.
But you gave us a packet about a month ago.
The hotel tax, uh, just the other day when we had our meeting with the governor of Hines in our chamber, the, uh, that was the discussion that came up, because they do, they are supposed to pay us hotel tax.
Well, they are a business.
Some are, some are, but there's some that can't be tracked, and we're trying to work on them.
The bill, the bill in Harrisburg, there's a bill in Harrisburg that would require Verbo and Airbnb to give us the list of, uh, Airbnbs.
That's a lot of revenue that's not coming into the...
Right, and we're aware that, and we've, and we've, yeah, we've actually been trying to, to coordinate with, yeah, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, we're going to discuss the very same issue.
Okay.
Okay?
We're gonna give you the same answers.
And I am angry.
Okay, what's your name?
As are sixty-eight other people.
What's, what's your name?
My name is Donna Lickte. I live at 206 Van Drive, Merritt Manor, Conneville, Pennsylvania. I am a retired English teacher of thirty-eight years. I would like to know why we were not notified that this was going in there. And I want to remind you that two years ago, we had a gun shop that we had to challenge. We had to get an attorney, and fortunately, a, a letter was sent to people who live nearby, and we stopped the gun shop, but we have that beautiful yellow beast to look at that is still there, that we have not been able to have removed. So here we are, two years later. We live in as close to a Norman Rockwell neighborhood as you will find anywhere. We help one another. We have a mixture of young families, retired people, and we work together. And we are proud of our homes, we take care of our homes. We have put a lot of money in our homes, and now we have this nuisance. Now, it's listed, all of our homes are listed as "single-family dwellings," and the classification says "three-bedroom, approximately two people per bedroom." If I have done my mathematics correctly, that adds up to six people. Splitting the Distance is an Airbnb, and they are advertising that they can accommodate eleven people. Their deed says it is a single-family dwelling, so how are they getting away with this? They are a nuisance. They have blocked people's driveways, animals have gotten into their garbage and dragged throughout the neighborhood. This is what we are now dealing with. Now, I personally went to see Senator Stefano. They suggested an ordinance. So, we have already paid five hundred dollars in attorney fees to have a letter sent to Splitting the Distance, uh, as a cease and desist. Well, in return, we got a very nasty letter back from their attorney, and their attorney actually accused those of us who spoke at the township meeting as not telling the truth. And they were going to bring charges of libel against the Daily Courier for printing what we said. Now, that was not very nice on the attorney's part, and we were offended.
So, your time is up.
Okay.
But thank you for, so, just to clarify, we're, we're not notified when these things happen either, so, it wasn't like we were notified and we didn't tell you, we don't get that notification.
Right, but we need to get something, somewhere, to notify people of these...
No, but, but if we're not notified, then we don't, we don't get that information.
If there would've been a zoning change, then there would've been a public notification system. That was important.
Just, what's your name?
My name is Kelly L. Foster. I'm also a resident of Merritt Manor, 201 Van Drive, Conneville, PA. I'm considered the historian of Merritt Manor. I have pictures of construction. This neighborhood is pristine, and my concern is, um, two, two things. I was a state employee for almost thirty-eight years. I've been a public servant with the state of Pennsylvania, and I think when it comes to county, I think the county should be able to help the residents. I think changes are needed. This is where it starts. If it doesn't start from the people, then nothing gets done. Um, second of all, as far as attorneys lately, to get anything done anywhere, you have to spend money to get an attorney. I'm already involved in something else. I've already spent thirty-five hundred dollars for fifteen hours. Okay, so, I feel the county needs to get involved with this, and the reason why I feel this way is because everybody watches the national news occasionally, not every day, but I feel, 'cause everybody says, "Oh, it's never gonna happen, it's never gonna happen." It can happen. I don't wanna be the first neighborhood in Fayette County that some terrorist comes in because we don't know about it, rents that Airbnb. We have elderly people walking, we have people with dogs and babies. I'm telling you now, from the bottom of my heart, this is a pristine neighborhood. I grew up there. I have my parents' house, 'cause, um, my parents got divorced, but I took over my mom's house, she's passed away. I've put my pride and soul into this house like everyone else has, and I just wanna remain that way, and I don't want Fayette County to be on the news over something stupid where a terrorist, 'cause you don't know, everybody says, you know, "It's never gonna happen to my neighborhood." I just think, as Commissioners, right now, with three people, or, you know, speaking about this, you can do something about it. I've been a public servant, I understand how government works, I've, I know all the behind-the-scenes. I think something needs to be done, I appreciate your time, and like I said, I don't wanna make the national news, 'cause everybody says, like I said, "It's never gonna happen, it can happen." I appreciate your time, I love my neighborhood, I go around and help the elderly people, I'd do anything for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I was chasing cows all morning. I missed a solar meeting, but I like, I did, can I speak just a couple things? All right, I, I heard Vince say about feeding the hungry. We got one dairy farm left in Nicholson Township, one, and he's closing down, thanks to this bull crap. He's gonna have to close down the last dairy farm left in Nicholson Township. Hey, but somebody's gonna make lots of money. It, one problem I have is, when you guys have a solar hearing here, if you don't live within a half a mile, they tell me you can't speak, because it's, I'm not affected. Is that correct?
We let anybody speak.
Not, not here, but I mean, in front of the, the committee.
Before the zoning hearing board, there's some limits on who is given party status. That means that actually...
This right here gives me status, right here.
But they do...
When I swore, I put my right hand up.
But they do allow generally people to speak.
No, give you the...
They do allow, that's my understanding.
Right, I agree, I, I, that's what they're telling me too.
We don't under, we don't control them anyways, that's an independent body. We can't tell them what to do.
My Second Amendment and these dog tags, when I served, should give me every right to speak at every, every hearing I want. I should be allowed. My, I, I've lived in Fayette County my whole life, I, the only time I left, when I left here, went and let, went to Fort Jackson, South Carolina, that's when I left, and when I got out of the Army, I came back here. So I, I should have a right to speak at every one of these. My, my kids, my grandkids, I got a grandbaby coming, I want, I want, they're surveying the field across the road from my house, and we sat in a church, and yous three all said, "Dave, you never have to worry about solar, because if it's farmable ground, we're never gonna put solar panels on it." If you're a farmer, and you're putting solar panels on it, you don't have a heart in it. There's no heart and soul, because I was turned, I turned down five million dollars, and you guys know I did, when that injection well come in. Money doesn't mean everything. I'm richer than that five million dollars, 'cause I, I believe in living off the earth. I may be just some poor-ass broke farmer, retired, but I believe the ground is mine, and we should, we should be protecting farmers and farm ground. There's guys, there's every farmer calling me in around the area looking for hay, because nobody wants to lease their farms no more, because they're getting all this rich money. And when you have our township supervisor and our township solicitor sit and tell us at the meeting that they're getting paid three hundred dollars for every acre they leased, they are grow, they're working for the solar company, that's bull crap too. It's disgusting. This money is, this, this, it's so corrupt, it's disgusting. And I thank you for your time, have a blessed day. Merry, happy Easter, you guys.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Hi, uh, my name is Stephen Wiltrow. I, uh, am, um, part of the family that owns Splitting the Distance, um, Airbnb, and I would like to just take a few minutes to, and talk to you folks about the Airbnb. Um, when we start, my daughter actually bought a place in, uh, at the 217 Rilla, and I lived there for a while, and then was able to buy her father, my father-in-law's property, her past property, and she moved there. And when we had the house, we just, we were trying to figure out what to do with it, because to be honest with you, when we talked about selling, but, it's a, and I agree, it's a beautiful neighborhood. That's one of the reasons why when we, when we, uh, bought the place, or my daughter was buying the place, we wanted her to move there. So, you know, we, we made it into an Airbnb, so that, to be honest with you, we're not really getting rich off of the Airbnb, we're really right now, we're using it to pay the mortgage and to make improvements. And that's why, you know, we're not trying to be a nuisance, and I don't feel we are. We are very selective in who we leave in there. If they don't have a perfect rating, guys, we don't leave them in there. We have given our, my, I've given my personal cellphone to pe, a number, to people in the community, that if there's any issues whatsoever, any nuisance, any problems, please give me a call, and, and folks, I'll give you it as well. Please give me a call, and I will come, and we will, if it's a nuisance, we will, they will have to shut, leave, plain and simple. So we're very selective, and as far as, you know, the, the parking, things of that nature, part of the problem that, the parking was when we were there working on the house, because it was our family, and we were going to work ourselves, so there was nights, there would be the whole big group of us there working on it. So as far as the Airbnb goes, they, they should be able to park in the parking area of the house. If they are not, then that means there's more, too many people there than what they told us, and we need to know so that we can do something about that, 'cause that is not to happen. So I guess, my point is, we don't want it to be a nuisance, we've, we've put a lot of money into the house, we really have. We want it to be a beautiful house, we have plans to improve it. We want it to be nicer, we, we want the neighborhood to be nicer. It, it's a great neighborhood. And Mrs. Lickte, I've known you a long time, you were my seventh-grade English teacher, I'm crying out loud, I, so I understand, I'm from, I'm from Conneville, I don't wanna destroy that neighborhood, I wanna make it better. My family wants to make it better, and that's why we're very selective in who we leave in there. And if, if there's a problem, please let us know, I, 'cause trust me, I, here, here's how I look at it, and here's what I, uh, my, my children look at it. If we don't want those people in that house beside, living beside me, I don't want him in my house. So, and I thank you for your time, but, but I would just say to you, and I, and our attorney, and we do have an attorney, and, and as far as him getting asked, that, that was not on us, I, that was something that, he did what he did, and I, you know, we talked about that, and I, but the thing about it is, as far as the garbage and all that stuff, some of that wasn't true, but please, we, we'd like to sit down and talk to you guys about your concerns. We really would, so that we can, we, 'cause we don't, we want the, the neighborhood to be better than what it was. We really do. So please, and I know you, but we do, we really do.
Alright, so, so...
I just wanna say one thing, move ahead, but we can get two more of these.
Well, that's...
Now, that I can't control.
Actually, your, your three minutes are, are up as well.
I know, and I understand, and I'm gonna go, I apologize for...
So, thank you for coming, hopefully there can be...
You guys can talk too.
Yeah.
You guys can talk.
There you go. Uh, any other public comment? Anybody online? There's no hands up. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Motion's properly moved in second, and any further discussion? Call for vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Happy Easter. Some good discussion, huh?